Okay, welcome to this afternoon's budget hearing. The first of two, I believe. We're going to have invocation. Is this for Ms. James? Is this for... Okay, this is not for...
No, that's for the meeting this...
This afternoon?
Yes.
Okay. So, keeping them cracked. Okay, thank you. Now we're better. All right, but we're still going to keep things proper and in order. So, again, I'm going to ask everybody to stand up and do a... Have a moment of silence, then we'll do the pledge of allegiance. If you will, bow with me. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, as stated on the agenda, the purpose of the budget hearings to provide citizen input in the county's proposed annual operating budget fiscal year ending June 30th, 2020. And with that being said, we will, at this time, turn it over to Ms. Ramona Bivens, Chief Financial Officer. I'm sorry.
I don't want the operations piece now. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This is our budget hearing that we're required to have each fiscal year when we get ready to adopt our annual budget. And I'm going to be discussing the fiscal year 2020 proposed annual budget.
Where's my sign-up sheet? I thought I had it. Oh.
Oops. Too fast. Okay. So, in accordance with official code of Georgia, we are required to adopt the annual budget. When we adopt the budget, we have to adopt a total budget, which is all of our funds. And we operate through six fund types, as shown here. On the general operating fund, of course, is our largest fund. That is where we account for our day-to-day operations. We have the special revenue funds. This is where we account for proceeds of specific revenue sources that are legally restricted to expenditures for specific purposes. You can think of fire fund and any grant funding that we receive. Those will be considered a special revenue fund. We also have our capital projects fund.
I don't know if your volume is as low, but if you can try to speak up, or they can turn up the volume a little bit.
Okay. We also have the capital projects fund. That's where we... All of our building projects are accounted for in there. Debt service, any debt payments that we have, it's in that fund. And then we have the internal service fund and the enterprise fund. In the internal service fund, that's where we account for the medical self-insurance and workers' compensation. This is just a snapshot of our local economic conditions and outlook. I just want to provide a little bit of what has been going on from information I received from the Economic Development Director. Four hundred and twenty-eight jobs have either been created or committed by companies in the county, including LTI, Lidl, Kebabs, Fresh Express, and Bedrosian. One hundred and fifty-six point nine million dollars of total investment has been provided to our local economy through their businesses. And also, I just wanted to point out that our unemployment rate has dropped to four and a half percent. That's as of March, according to the Georgia DOL statistics. The prior year rate was four point nine. This chart here just shows... Speaks a little bit more to the unemployment rate. As you recall, during the recession, we had an all-time high of thirteen and a half percent. And since 2011, it started to come down gradually to where we are now. Again, last year, we were at four point nine percent for the year. And through March of 2019, we're at four and a half percent. When putting the budget together, we tried to balance maintaining the taxpayer service levels that we have now and while being cognizant of tax rates, of tax increases, rather. Some of the revenue challenges that we're facing, the same as we had last year, when we discussed the elimination of the aviation fuel sales tax. As you know, that that was passed last year and became effective on July 1 of 2019. That's approximately six million dollars a year in sales tax revenue that we will lose in sales tax. However, Governor Deal did. And the state did provide a grant to replace the funds, but only for three years. This current fiscal year, next fiscal year, 2020, and fiscal year 2021, we have enough funds to carry us through those years to replace that revenue source. That is, the reduction in the sales tax rate... Sales tax revenue does have a direct impact on our property taxes because the loss credit that we calculate to get to arrive at a net millage rate is going to be impacted because the sales tax is a component of that calculation. So, when we have lower sales tax revenue, that lowers our loss credit, which results in a higher net millage rate, which you will see later on in the presentation. Also, Clayton County entities, I know the COO has been meeting with the cities and the school board on looking at other avenues of where we can generate revenue at the airport, and also looking at potential state legislation and working with our local delegation to see what can we do to try to recover some of that. Because, as we know, over eighty percent of the airport resides in Clayton County. And we're not getting a lot of revenue from there. Another area of revenue challenges is through state legislation, HB 212, which was... Became effective in 2017, I believe. And that diverts some of our TAVT taxes to MARTA. That's the avalon taxes on the vehicles. And as you can see, this chart just shows in 2015 and 16 how much we were getting, two point six million in '15, one point four million in '16. However, in 2017, you see it decreased to $200,000, point two million. And last year, in 2018, we didn't get any revenue at all. And to date, so far this year, we've only received $149,000. Mr. Baskin is actually working with the State Department of Revenue to try to determine why Clayton County is having to pay such a high percentage. Because at the time, we went the... I think it goes back to before when we were in MARTA. We weren't part of MARTA at that time. So, our rate shouldn't be based on those years when we were in MARTA. So, he's working with them to try to resolve that. Also, when we talk about revenues, the majority of our revenues come from property taxes. And one of the things that I have provided the Board with each year is our residential average sales price. And during the recession, property values went way down. Pre-recession, our average sales price was $139,000 in 2007. And on this chart, you see in 2009, it went to ninety-nine thousand into forty-five thousand in 2012, which was an all-time low. But starting in 2013, it started ticking up a little bit, and it's gradually increased. Last year, we were up to $137,000, which is a thirty percent increase from 2017. And as of the first quarter of this year, we're at $149,550, which is a nine percent increase from last year. That's the average sales price of residential properties in the county. I want to talk about our property tax trends because of the property values. Again, this is our major source of revenue. And this chart shows the digest... Trends of the digest of the past few years. It summarized some of the relevant property tax data for the recent periods and assumptions for this tax year. Our pre-recession net property values were around eight point four billion dollars. Our digest for this year shows that we're at seven point eight billion on 2019 line, if you look at that. It's still not... Even though it's increased, it's still not back to those pre-recession values. If you look at the digest growth column, you can see over the last eight years, right in the middle of the recession, where we had a negative digest growth in 2011, 2012, and 2013, and '14. We started seeing some recovery in 2015, had a little decline in '16, but in '17, we had a four point nine percent increase in growth. And last year, we had a significant increase in growth of twelve point nine percent. And this year, based on the preliminary digest that we received from the Tax Assessors Office in April, it's a projected about nine percent increase.
I got a question.
Yes, ma'am.
2017, it tells on this chart that the percentage change in the millage rate was zero?
Yes. If you look at the net millage rate from the prior year, it's the same. We didn't change the net millage rate. It remained the same, the sixteen point five nine six. We maintained the millage rate for those two years. So, there was no increase in the millage rate.
Okay.
Okay. And if you're also noticing that, that's why I was going next on the net... On the millage rate. The net millage rate, we decreased it last year, and you will see the percent change there. However, this year, the net millage rate, we're maintaining the same gross millage rate which we reduced last year. However, because of the decrease in the loss credit, the net millage rate is going to increase. But it's because of that decrease in the sales tax.
I got another question.
Yes, ma'am.
So, as you've already gone over earlier, it shows that we're receiving funding from the governor. Are you calculating that into this in order to come up with what that net millage rate should be?
We can't do that. It's the actual collection of sales tax. So, that's why I stated earlier, that six million dollar decrease is going to impact us. Because we can't... Even though they replace it, it's in the form of a grant. It's not actually sales tax collections. So, we can't use that in the calculation of the loss credit.
So, is... Okay. I understand, but I... The other question, though, at what point do we take this into account? And where do we see it? So that we can see where we are.
When I get further into the budget...
Okay, I got you. I'm sorry.
So, what happened when we got that money? We got it during last fiscal year.
Okay.
And because it was allocated for future years, we put that in fund balance. So, when I talk about fund balance, it's going to look kind of high, but we have to remember that money is included in that. And we'll be allocating money out of fund balance every year for the next two years to make up for that difference. Because we have that money sitting in the fund balance now.
So, then that should also affect, though, Chairman, what's the recommendation on the millage rate? Even though you can't use it to offset it, but what I'm saying is when we're looking at where we need to be as a county to help us make a policy decision on our vote. And maybe I can have more conversation offline. I just got to understand where we're taking it into consideration to really see where we are.
Okay. So, the next slide shows the tax digest history. And as I stated, this shows the gross digest, and you can see where the changes from 2012 to 2019, how it has increased as well. And then it shows the net MNO digest, and that's after our exemptions are applied. And this is where I really wanted to focus to talk about the millage rate. You will see in 2012, the gross millage rate was twenty point nine five three. That was increased in 2011 by the Board at that time, which is the first increase in a few years to the gross millage rate. And we maintained that same millage rate through 2016, when it was increased to twenty-two point one. And 2017, it was decreased to twenty-one point nine two four. And that was when you saw where there was a zero percent change in the net millage rate. That's so we could keep the net millage rate the same. And last year, we decreased the gross millage rate even further. This year, we are maintaining the same gross millage rate, but if you look at the rollback millage, that's where we apply that loss credit. So, how we calculate that credit? We take the current property values and... I'm sorry, we take the sales tax and divide it by the current property values to get that credit. And as you can see, as I stated earlier, the... It decreased by point... I think it's by point four six seven. Go to my next page. And so, we went from five point two two three to four point seven five six, which is why you see the net millage rate going from fifteen point five nine six to sixteen point oh six three. So, the property values and the loss credit have a direct impact on our bottom... On our net millage rate. The net taxes levied based on that would be $125 million. That's what would be billed to the homeowners. However, as with most receivables, you don't receive all of your money for whatever reason. So, we've historically... For the last few years, we had a ninety-seven and a half percent collection rate, which we... Hold on, let's move to the next pages. Showed that we'll get $122 million in revenue. Typically, the past two years, I know last year and so far this year, we've actually have exceeded our projection because people have been paying their taxes. Everybody's pretty much been paying their taxes. And I contribute that to the improvement in the economy as well, when people are able to pay those taxes.
So, that three percent differential, is that from appeals or appeals and those just who aren't paying?
Well, no. So, when you're collecting... When you're billing, typically, you don't expect a hundred percent of that to be paid. So, we typically... We've historically had ninety-seven. Prior to that, about three years ago, I think, was it ninety-five percent collection rate? But as I stated, as the economy started improving, we started seeing an uptick in the actual collection. So, we increased that to ninety-seven and a half percent. And last year and this year, so far, we've exceeded that. But it's because of when you say, asked about the appeals. Now, the appeals is a little different. The appeals happen...
So, the appeals aren't... Is not calculated in that three percent?
That's correct. The appeals happen before the bills even go out.
Got you.
Yes. Yeah, the appeals... And I'm going to talk about that in a few minutes, too.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. So, on this slide, it just shows the comparison of last year net digest to this one. So, we went from seven point two to seven point eight million dollars. Again, as I stated, the base millage rate will remain the same at twenty point nine one zero. However, the sales tax credit did decrease due to the loss of the sales tax. And we're projecting a net millage rate of sixteen point oh six three, which will generate $125.5 million that would be billed. However, we're projecting to collect only $122.8 of that. You were asking about the appeals. So, here we are on the appeals. The notices were mailed, both real and residential property... I'm sorry, real and personal property were mailed on April 26th. The deadline for appeals is June 10th for both types of property. And once we get those back, if any adjustments are required... Excuse me. If there's a decrease in the digest, then that would have what I consider a negative impact because that would decrease our revenue. And if it's an increase in the digest, then it would have a positive impact. It would increase our revenue at that time. And then we can either look at either keeping that additional revenue or maybe looking at reducing the millage rate where we will remain at the proposal that I have in the All right. So, after looking at all our revenue projections in all areas and all of our expenditures, our FY 2020 general fund proposed budget, we're projecting to end this current fiscal year at $78.2 million in fund balance. And as I stated earlier, $12 million of that is for the grant funds that we receive from the state to replace our sales tax revenue. So, if I always... When I'm talking, I like to take that out. So, I'd say my real fund balance is actually the seventy-eight minus the twelve, which is sixty-six million dollars. But for... If the actual amount is the seventy-eight point two million dollars. We're projecting revenues at $212.6 million with expenses at $222.3 million. And what you see here, it says revenues over and under at nine point seven. Six million dollars of that is the coming out of fund balance for the grant. This is where we're putting the money back in to take care of that six million dollars. And then the budget later on, I'll show you. We have $3.7 million one-time use of fund balance for some items that I'll discuss later on in the presentation when we look at some of the items that are included in the budget. The sources of revenue that we have, as I stated earlier, the majority of our revenue comes through property taxes. This chart shows that the $122.4 million of the total revenue that we're projecting is fifty-five percent of our total budget. Other taxes and assessments is at twenty-two point nine percent, with charges for services at nine point nine seven percent. If you... I wanted to call your attention to the other financing sources. It's larger than what it normally is. And again, that's because that six million dollars is included in that amount. You take that six million dollars out, that'll drop it way back down. So, there's something new that we're having in our... This year because of that six million dollar grant. When we received it, it rolled into fund balance at the end of the fiscal year last year.
All right. Mr. Chair, for the record, I know we understand it, but since this is being recorded, can we make sure that we clarify that when you talk about property taxes, it does not include school taxes and it's only the county portion of the taxes?
You are correct, Commissioner Warner.
Just for the record...
The county and the school system are two separate taxing entities. They're their own governing authority. The school district sets their own tax rate, as well as the state, because it's on our tax bill as well.
Correct.
And the county sets theirs. So, there's like three different... Five, four different millage rates, really, because we have the fire fund for those living in unincorporated or those that live in the cities that we provide fire service to. So, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So, the next shows our expenditures. We talked about our expenditures, spending $222.3 million. And this slide shows the expenditures by type, the types of expenditures that we have: personnel services, operating expenses, capital outlay, debt service, and other financing uses. Personnel services, you can see, as always, and as with most businesses or other governments, is the majority of our expenditures, is at sixty-seven point three percent this year.
At what percentage of that is employee benefits? Can you carve that out, please?
I can't right now, but I will get it to you.
It's important.
Generally, it's not thirty-something percent of the actual salaries, but we lump it all together on here.
I understand.
Okay. Operating expenses is twenty-eight point six percent. That includes all of our day-to-day operations. And then we have the capital outlay that comes out of the general fund. The majority of our capital outlay comes out of the SPOSS project, but we do have some in the general fund for building and maintenance repairs of those things. Then the debt service and other financing uses. And under that, the other financing uses, that's where we budget for retiree medical and matches for the special revenue funds or any grant matches that we may have to match throughout the year. I also like to show the categories of the expenditures that we have. So, as you can see on here, the largest category, our largest... The largest category is courts and law enforcement, which is the courts, the jails, the sheriff's office, all of those over at the courthouse area. So, that's the... That is the largest category of expenditures, followed by general government, which is, again, our mostly day-to-day items. And then public safety, which includes police department, emergency services, emergency management, rather. Then that... The rest of them, we have transportation and development, parks and records, the next highest area of our expenditures. And then the remainder of that is in health and welfare, the libraries, and those transfers out that we do to the other... To the grants for the matching. So, when we were putting this budget together...
One quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
Transportation and development, that's only what the county provides, not what we get reimbursed from the state, correct?
That is, that's the expense that the county...
Only the county.
Yes, that the county that we expand.
Some of these, I know, I'm just trying to think as we're... We may get questions later.
Oh, none of the problem. Okay. The next slide shows some of the items. I want to discuss some of the items that are included in this budget. We all have... Remember the retreat that the Board had in February, I believe? And during that retreat, the Board set some goals and developed a strategic plan. So, I wanted to point out some of the items that were included in this budget.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Forgive me.
Oh, that's okay.
One quick question, libraries.
Go ahead.
How much is that from the state, or is that all county?
Uh, this is the revenue side.
Is all of us?
Huh?
All of the county?
No, some of it... We get some of the money from the state, but that's on the revenue side. And that would be under the grants, but it's under... It's a general fund grant.
So, question, is that grant included in this four point one six?
Is that the expenditures?
Yes, ma'am.
The expenses for that is, yes, ma'am. The grant itself is a revenue source, so it wouldn't be... That's the actual expense for the library that you're looking at.
So, who covers?
And some of it, we cover some of it, and the state covers some of it as well.
And you're going to talk about the percentages later?
I don't have that... Does that number? Dennis can find it in my book.
Put it on there for me.
It's in the book. I get it for you.
Thank you.
Okay. This slide shows we've included a little over fourteen million dollars of this budget, addresses those goals, some of the goals that the Board had. And this is just some of the things that we added to the budget to address above and beyond what was already included in there. The top two... Your number one and two items were communication and image and quality of life. So, under communication and image, we have personnel and the communication department and a consultant. Under quality of life, we've included a three percent cost of living adjustment for all employees, a merit increase for those employees that are eligible for the merit on their anniversary date, an increase in part-time minimum hourly rate to $10 an hour. We've included funds for public safety relocation incentive. There will be forty-five total employees, fifteen in each of the three areas, fire, police department, and sheriff's office. We've also included operation costs for the three new facilities that will be opening during the next fiscal year. That's the Northeast Senior Center, District Four Recreation Center, as well as the Northwest
Where is this southwest intergenerational facility?
That is opening in the next fiscal year. That's not open during 2020. These are the facilities that will be opening between July 1 of this year and June 30 of next year.
What was that date you gave me originally, Mr. COO? Can you fill it in?
And I got my dates from the SPOSS...
I think it's June of next year.
It's June of next year? Okay. Well, it... Because only for one month, it's not going to be that much, so we should be able to absorb it.
Cover.
Okay. Just make sure we have it listed, knowing with parentheses.
Yes, ma'am. All right. The next slide shows continuing the quality of life goal, personnel and equipment for additional road cleanup crews in the prison area. That will then allow us to have one cleaning crew per district. That's salaries and benefits, as well as equipment that's needed for each of the new crews. Building and maintenance and vehicle replacement. Remember, I spoke earlier about the three point seven million dollars on top of the six million dollars of the one-time fund balance use. It's a one and a half million dollars for each one of those areas, so that's three million dollars. Makes up part of that nine point seven million dollars. There's funding in here for the Cleet Hayden Beautiful Initiative, as well as additional personnel for various departments. For police department, we have some field training officers that were requested, and we included in here that would allow them to temporarily assign some of their police officers as field training officers when they got... When new recruits come on. And we have code enforcement officers and supervisors, animal control officers included, to address the personnel needed at the two... We opened a new facility and didn't provide enough personnel for those, so we added the animal control for that as well. We're adding additional dispatchers to E-911. Due to the onboarding of the two cities, we never increased the personnel when we took on the city of Riverdale and then Mar-a-Lago City. So, we're adding two additional personnel to assist with that increase in call volume as well. I have some of that... I just want to know that some of that will be offset on the revenue side because the E-911 funds that was going to those cities will now be coming to the county. So, that'll offset some of the costs of that as well, you know, on the revenue side.
Where can I see that amount projected?
It's in the... It's going to be in the revenues. And I have to show you in the budget document.
Okay.
Okay. We also have additional personnel for HR in the benefits area, as well as upgrading the courtroom technology in the SPOSS Superior Courts courtrooms, the evidence technology system, recordings, and presentation equipment. All of that needs to be updated as well. Under economic opportunity, which was included as one of the goals, there's funding in the... For the community development personnel, we've added a senior zoning code enforcement officer to help... To assist in addressing the weekend sign blitz that the Board wanted to see, as well as a planner, too, that will be responsible for the build-out of the future land use plan. And under the governance area, we have several items listed there. We have the legal department, having our own internal legal department. We're providing additional IT personnel for support for the courts, the DA Solicitors Office, for they... They need some support there in their software. They don't have a specialized IT person there, so this will provide some assistance to them. Also, we've added money for IT to upgrade the server. Our I Series support will be ending in September, and this is where this house is our old CPU One, which is where the criminal justice information system, also known as SEJIS, currently resides. And also, we need additional storage space as we're going to more electronic or digitization of our documents.[1747.37] So we need additional storage space for that. Um, fire fund, this, um, they, we're adding a full-time emergency services physician and a training officer. Both of these should result in additional revenue. As a physician, we manage the nurse practitioners on the community treatment units, um, and then also ensure that proper billing is done and we get reimbursed at the rate that we should. And on the EVOC, which is the Emergency Vehicle Operations Course, is that right? Is that right?
Got it.
Um, that will also allow for, um, that will operate out of the new fire training center and, um, provide some, um, personnel support. Where we're looking at becoming a regional training center where we can, um, have a revenue source where other jurisdictions will send their personnel here to get their training. And probate court also asked for some posi-, um, additional positions by eliminating the part-time staff and creating some full-time positions to assist with the increased caseloads to help them meet, um, the mandates that they have. And then the elections department, um, has, um, some funding in here for personnel to assist with the certification of the machines, securing of the voting machines, um, the maintenance of those machines, voter education, and all the additional requirements that have come out, that they will be incurring due to the passage of House Bill three sixteen. So in summary, the FY twenty, oh, what did I just do? Okay, sorry. Um, the twenty twenty proposed budget, again, we're projecting to end this current fiscal year with seventy eight point two million dollars in fund balance. We're projecting two hundred and twelve point six million dollars in revenues, two hundred and twenty two point, excuse me, two hundred and twenty two point three million dollars in expenses, using nine point seven million dollars out of the fund balance to, um, to balance the budget, which would leave us projected sixty eight and a half million dollars at the end of next fiscal year, June thirtieth of twenty twenty. As I, as I stated earlier, we're required to adopt a total budget, even though our focus was on general fund because that is the largest, um, of all the funds. That also is where our tax rate, um, impacts our tax rate. So we focus a lot on that area during our budget hearings. Um, so our total budget would be three hundred one point seven million dollars, with seventy three point seven percent of that being in the general fund, and twelve point eight percent of that's in the special revenue funds. And then the remaining, we have capital projects, debt service, internal service fund again, which is where our medical, self-insurance, and our workers' comp, um, is accounted for. The enterprise funds, um, ending at one point three percent. I just wanted to note that our SPOST, which is, goes in, um, has not been budgeted in here because we have to budget it as what we can, as a life-to-date project in the new system. So when I bring the budget back for final approval, I will be bringing a budget amendment to amend in that total dollar amount for SPOST projects, because we have to do it as a separate, um, from this. So it's not shown on here, but it will be brought back, um, as well at that time. Um, we talked about fund balance earlier. Um, again, we're projecting to end this current fiscal year at seventy eight point two million dollars. Good business practice, as well as our, um, requirements from the, um, from Moody's, the credit rating agencies dictate that we have at, at a minimum, one month of operating expenses in reserve. Our current monthly operating expense, average monthly operating expense right now is sixteen million dollars. So right now, we have a little over four months, um, of funding to carry us over if anything were to happen with our tax revenue or anything throughout the year. Um, also, in our, in our budget document under policies, it states that we have adopted a policy where we will maintain an undesignedated fund balance equal to ten percent of our general fund revenues, which is based on this proposed budget of two hundred and twenty two million dollars, I'm sorry, two hundred and sixty, two hundred and twelve million in revenues. Um, it's a little over twenty million dollars that we need to have available as well. So under the funding summary, in order to add additional items to this proposed budget, if you wanted to add anything to it, we would either have to find additional revenue through growth in the digest or increase in the millage rate, reallocating items in the current budget, in other words, removing some things and putting something else in that place, or use of the reserves, which we don't do that unless it's a one-time, non-recurring expenditure. On the budget calendar recap, um, there's one change that's changed from the previous budget calendar. We're going to move the adoption date to the second board meeting in June to give us the, since we have the, the hearing, um, this, this board meeting, the, the second board meeting in May, that give us, um, a few more weeks, other than two weeks, to make any changes or make any adjustments that we may need to make. Um, the millage rate hearings, if needed, and that's only if there's a tax increase, we would have those in July, but we won't know that until we get the final digest in late June. So once we get that, we'll calculate everything and work with the tax commissioner to determine if budget hearings are going to be needed, um, so he can get everything that he needs ready to take to the state to get us certified so he can send up the tax bills. And, um, just know that we have to adopt the budget no later than June thirtieth. Um, that's all that I have. Um, I'm open to any comments or questions that you may have, or-
All right, there's any, I'm sorry to cut you off.
Oh, go ahead.
Any questions for, uh, Ms. Bivens?
Uh, Ms. Bivens, would you happen to know or have what the, uh, fund balance has been at the end of the last three budgeting years?
Hold on, give me a minute. So last year, our ending fund balance was ninety three million dollars. You can remember of that ninety three, we had the eighteen million dollars in there at that time for the, um, grant from the state. So we used six million, huh?
That was twenty seven.
Well, remember, we had to send money to the, to the school, not to the schools, to the cities.
To the cities.
To the cities, yes. Based on the, yes. So our portion of it was the eighteen million dollars. And we used six of it, six of it is being used for this year. And we're projecting to end this year at seventy eight, and what do you have there?
Okay, well, if you don't have it now, if I can get it.
I can get it for you, yes, ma'am. Okay, I can go online, I have it for you in a few minutes, um, because it's on the camera, I just go online and get it.
Oh, okay. And the question, was it today I talked with you or yesterday? I'm mixed up in my days regarding the two positions for Parks and Rec?
We're going to address that as well when we bring back an amended budget for adoption.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions?
Um, you were talking about calculation, so let's go ahead and calculate the ninety three million minus the eighteen. What year was that, that was ninety three million again? Just give me the year. Last year was twenty eighteen, so you were at seventy five million last year on the fund balance.
Yes, ma'am.
And so you're looking at this year, twenty nineteen budgeted at seventy eight million.
Seventy eight, yes.
And how much of the seventy eight million is that still left, anything included from?
Twelve.
Twelve, okay.
Yes.
All right.
Okay.
Any other questions? Well, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
All right. All right, if there's, Madam Clerk, we just confirm, and we didn't have anybody to, uh, sign up to speak. Okay. Having no other business, uh-
He has someone to raise their hand to that.
That sign up for.
Commissioner Warren, you and Dennis calculated for me this, out of the sixty seven percent for the bene-, for the employee?
Yes, ma'am.
For personnel, thirty nine, twenty seven point eight five percent of that is for, um, benefits.
Twenty seven point eight five?
Eight five, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay.
And we're working on that, right? Because I think that's the place where we can get a little, little bit back.
You can, you can address it in the next, in our next meeting. There was a sign-up sheet back there. All right, no other business, uh, for this hearing. Uh, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Uh, second to motion, those favor I?
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous.